All right, it is 4:00 PM and I'm gonna call the City Council Special Formal Meeting to order. And it is July 12th, 2022, 4:00 PM. And we're gonna start with item number one. Roll call, please.
Alter, here.
Burgess, here.
Harmson, here. Taylor, here. Teague, here. Thomas, here. Weiner, here.
All right, well hello everyone. Item number two is evaluations. Consider a motion to adjourn to executive session to evaluate the professional competency of individuals whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputations, and those individuals requested a closed session. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session, please?
So moved, Taylor.
Second, Weiner.
Roll call.
Sorry, I didn't bring it. Burgess?
Yes.
Thomas?
Alter?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Weiner? Weiner, sorry.
Yes.
Harmson?
Yes.
All right, motion passed at seven to zero, and we will adjourn into the City Managers' Conference Room for a closed session. We just finished an executive session, and we're on to item number three, which is adjournment. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Seconded, Burgess.
Moved by Alter, seconded by Burgess. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. We will be adjourned until 6:00 PM, which will go into our formal meeting at that time. We will come back to our work session after the formal meeting. All right, it is July 12th, 2022, and we're going to go into our work session, which we didn't have time for earlier today. And the first item was clarification of agenda items, which we've already went through our agenda items, so we're gonna go into the next item, which is information packets discussions. And we'll start with June 23rd.
IP two, the Neighborhood Development Services Memo, the annual report. Thank you very much, Tracy. It's very helpful information, and I have to say that the graphs and the pictures make it much more interesting to follow through and read. So I appreciate that, that you included that. That's really fun, and very, very important data, so thank you for that.
Agreed. Yes, thank you, Tracy.
Next info packet is June 30th.
IP four, the civil service exam results. Just quickly, just wanted to mention, I think Janice sort of touched on it earlier, about the six new staff for transit operators. We've been hearing how it'd been really hard to get bus drivers, and so it was great to see those. Welcome to those six people on that list, and congratulations, and it's good to see.
And then we are on to June 7th, and we do have IP four that we'll discuss, but June 7th?
July 7th.
July 7th. July 7th. Anything else before we get to IP four?
Just wanna highlight IP eight, which was the building statistics for the month of June, which were much, much, much better than the rest of the year. We were at 62 million, and the last, next highest month so far this year was about 10.4 million, and several below five, or a couple below five even, so really grateful to see that addition.
And I would just call attention to IP six. Just the budget at a glance is very helpful to get an overview.
All right, we are on to IP four from July 7th. And Tracy, you wanna give us an update?
We have a, the city owns a property. It's at 724 Ronald Street, and this is a property that we purchased on a sheriff's sale back in 2016. It had a history of deferred maintenance and nuisance issues. So we bought it in the hopes of, with the intent that we were going to demolish the home, and we were going to build something based on the missing middle, doing a missing middle housing demonstration. So we've owned it since 2016. Earlier this year, we did a periodic inspection, and it did have deferred maintenance. There were some issues with the roof. There are problems. We declared it a dangerous building, and we demolished it. So it is a vacant lot right now. We were approached by the school district about the possibility of dedicating that lot, basically selling that lot for the student-built home. They've not had a student-built home, the official program, since 2010. The school district has hired an instructor, so this, the home, it's zoned RS8. It is in the Brown Street Historic District. The home would be there. It'd be a student, it'd be a single-family house. It'd be built by the school district. The Housing Fellowship would own the house. They would operate it as affordable rental for large families. It would be dedicated. It'd be permanent affordability, because it'd be placed in their portfolio. The zone is RS8, so it does allow single-family detached properties. I think we were hoping that someday we would do a form-based code in this area, and that maybe we could increase the density. But it's in a historic district. It's zoned RS8. It does have an alley, so there's a potential, because of the width of the lot, that we could have two separate lots. So there might be a time where the school district could, or the Housing Fellowship, if they were to own the lot, could split the lot, and we'd have two lots. The proposal that we're talking about, like I said, is that the student, the Housing Fellowship would buy the house, the lot. The school district would hire the instructor, and they would provide the students and the instruction for the lot. The home builders would provide technical expertise. The home builders would go through the design, the planning process. They would do all the skilled part. School district may have to, they use their students, but they would have to hire contracted labor for the parts that they couldn't do. What else? The Housing Fellowship was interested in acquiring the slot because they have a difficulty. The last two years, they've bought, or they've purchased about 45 units. They're all one- or two-bedroom homes. They've had a difficult time placing larger families. They haven't been able to place those families that need three- to five-bedroom homes, so this project would fit that need. They would need to apply to us for Affordable Housing Fund. We have opportunity funds available to acquire that lot, because the city would have to sell the lot to them. So they would apply to us for the Affordable Housing Fund, for the opportunity funds to acquire the lot. We would sell it. They would enter a MOU with the school district, the home builders, the vocational training council, and the Housing Fellowship to develop the slot. The students would start enrolling this year to do the prerequisites, so that next year they can enter the student-built class, and that would, so they'd build the house in the 2023-24 school year. And then if they, if we're able to have that western lot, there's some private sewer easements that need to be worked out, they'd be able to do the second home the following school year. So the proposal hits a lot of, a lot of our strategic planning priorities. Oh, I forgot to mention, since it's in the Brown Street Historic District, the house has to meet the historic character of the neighborhood. It has to go through HPC to get approved. It has to be one-and-a-half to two-story, single-family home. The chance that we could get at density is if the Housing Fellowship wanted to proceed maybe with accessory dwelling unit, those that can be added to the back of the house, or to, they could add onto a garage. But there will be HPC involvement, because they have to prove the design to get the building permit. So it meets a lot of goals, like I said. There's student training, vocational training into the trades. It gets dedicated into permanent affordability with the Housing Fellowship. It's rented at below fair market rent to those below 60% of median income to larger families. The Housing Fellowship, since we don't know design costs, we don't know the final design, we don't know how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, there's always the cost of construction right now. So we don't have a cost, but there's possibility, as the Housing Fellowship works through this, the design with the HBA, that they might have to apply for additional funds. Depends on what those final costs are, we don't know. But that would come back to you. Right now, what the proposal is, is are you interested in selling this lot to the Housing Fellowship, so they can dedicate it to this program? They do need to know, because the home builders have to work with the Housing Fellowship to get those plans ready. So this year, they'll be working on plans, design, getting city approvals, which includes HBC approval. They start working on ordering supplies for the next year, and doing some onsite construction. And GT Carr with the home builders is here if you have any questions about their process. But they need to know before the school year. They need to know in August if this is a lot that will work. Otherwise, they will have to scramble to get a different lot in order to start this process, so that they're all ready to go for the 23-24 school year.
Was that accurate?
Okay. And then either GT or I can answer any questions that you might have about the lot.
Can I ask a question that, it's backing out a little bit? I think that the description of this is incredibly interesting, and I really like how many different things are beneficial to the community, both in the process of building the house, and then what its intention is. But I do have some questions about process. One is, is there an established process for this? Have there been instances where this, where the city has owned property and then made decisions about its, you know, sort of what happens with it? You know where I'm going with this. I've gotten feedback that it's like, the public wasn't involved in this at all. So can you talk to that?
We rarely have land that we just sit on. The only other land we have is that six-lot townhome in Lindeman we're using as land banking. We typically don't have, but we do get requests. I get requests about once a month from developers. Do we have land, you know, for Lytech projects? Do we have properties available? Typically, we don't. So we've had this property, and like I said, we were waiting for different code changes, different form-based codes that probably could do. We just, I mean, we've had it since 2016, so we just didn't have an opportunity to do, you'd have to rezone that whole neighborhood in order to get a higher density than that single-family home that the current zoning designation allows. So we had the property. The school district needed land for the student-built house, so they, I think they contacted the city. We actually had a lot, so that's how the, that's how it happened. That's how the proposal came to be. Typically, since we don't have just vacant land we own, I think the last, we do our piece, like we did it for the Chauncey, we did it for the...
Yeah, I can elaborate on that a little bit. I mean, when we've, when we've done this before, we've, I'm thinking of like the Public Space One houses in the North Side. We acquired those. We did an RFP, and we've added a couple of different options there. The Chauncey, the Rise, those are some of the more recent ones, although they're not necessarily recent as in the last couple of years. Our intention has shifted a bit with this. Our plans have shifted, and I wanna be clear on that. Even as, as earlier as, you know, probably the beginning of this calendar year, our intention was to do an RFP and see what, see what proposals were there. But as soon as we learned that the student-built house program was officially coming back, and that they needed a lot, we felt that this was a perfect opportunity. And they are working on a tight timeframe. If, you know, you wanna go the RFP route, we can certainly do that, and that would be consistent with our past direction on this. We'll probably miss out on this partnership, and, you know, we'll still work with the schools to try to find a lot. Maybe that's in Iowa City. We don't have other lots to offer, but maybe, maybe there's a way for us to participate in some, it may be in Corahville, maybe in North Liberty, maybe somewhere else in the Iowa City School District region. But again, this opportunity came to us, and as Tracy said, it checks a lot of the strategic goals that the council has, in terms of being able to provide permanent affordable housing, partnering with trusted, trusted partners, both government, nonprofit, and private partners. We can increase the density potentially from one single-family home to possibly two, with possibly two accessory dwelling units. I can't commit to that now, because we still need to go through the, or the trust fund, or, I'm sorry, the Housing Fellowship would have to go through the design process with the home builders, but that's certainly a possibility. And we know that the design will ultimately be reviewed by your Historic Preservation Commission. So we felt like, boy, this checks a lot of boxes, and we still have some, some pretty strong assurances that the end product is something that we're gonna be really proud of. And I think it's a pretty special opportunity, as the school district brings this program back, for us to jump onboard first and say, hey, we wanna be a partner with this too. So that's a little bit more background, and again, I do wanna acknowledge that, you know, this isn't something that's been in the works for six months. This has, this has been a little bit of a change of direction for us, but we felt, we felt the opportunity was pretty, pretty special.
Thank you for the context.
Well, I just, I just wanted to also, you know, I think I'm really interested in the collaborative effort here that's been identified. You know, we did receive a letter from Kevin Boyd with HRC, HPC rather, sorry. I do feel I would like to hear from Historic Preservation. They have a meeting coming up Thursday of this week. I'd like to hear from them before we, you know, make a decision on this. It does check a lot of boxes. It misses some boxes, including the whole missing middle concept. That was really the idea behind purchasing this property, was to explore, which I think was noted in the memo, you know, that it serves as a demonstration project for how missing middle might be employed in the core neighborhoods. And so that was certainly an expectation of mine. I'd be interested in seeing if there aren't ways we can move forward with that concept prior to having some wholesale rezoning of the area. The other point and concern that I have is that the, this process, because it's moved at a pretty rapid pace, has had no neighborhood impact or involvement. And this is something of, you know, considerable interest to the North Side neighborhood and to those in the core neighborhoods in terms of the outcome. I think there's a lot at stake with this project. I've tended to view it in that sense, if we're looking at it as a demonstration project, that it's, you know, we're trying to model a concept for how infill can be done well in the core neighborhoods. And so the outcome of this project carries that weight. You know, what, how well will it be done? If it's not done well, the whole notion of being able to promote infill in the historic neighborhoods would not be advanced with this project. I'm very optimistic that we can do a great job with this project. And I think this team that's been assembled could, you know, possibly be part of the process, because it, you know, I am intrigued with the idea of the mentorship opportunities that it provides, the, you know, working with the school district, you know, the four, four aspects of the Vocational Training Council, the Housing Fellowship as a future owner of the property. All of that, I think, is great, and I'd like to try to hold on to that concept and build on it. At the same time, I think there are some other aspects of this project that I think we need to incorporate into the process before I'm willing to sign off on it.
When is the date that the city kinda need to know this?
Can GT answer that? He's, okay.
Hello?
Hi, GT Carr, I'm current Vocational Training Council President. The issue with the timeline, to answer that, is working backwards, we need to be in a position to get school board curriculum approval, which we would submit with plans and the concept to them in October for their November meeting. And we need to have plans based on a concept probably by September, which, which I think we can do, but I think the reality is to just answer the question is, if we probably can't get consensus at next meeting for the reasons outlined by Mr. Thomas, then the project would probably just go somewhere else, which, fine. And I would add one other component. The concept that we're rolling out is, we would try, our goal is a net zero design on this as well, so.
Your goal is what? Sorry? I did not hear the last thing you said.
Turn up that mic a little.
Net zero.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gotcha.
Thank you for that. I wanted to know the timeline, because I've heard some things from fellow counselors here. One, I think it hits a lot of the boxes, and net zero is really impressive. I also am very conscious of the public process that is probably gonna be very important for this on a lot of levels, as Counselor Thomas has mentioned. So I don't know that, you know, we could have an answer by the next meeting, because it would be in our work session, and public wouldn't come until, you know, the formal meeting to even give thought processes. So I guess for me, we won't be able to meet their timeline, so for me, I guess, council, I think we have to give some thoughts and direction to staff, and that would be that we, you know, put out a, put out a RFP and see what we get.
Just one clarification, Mayor. If the council did wanna move forward, what, what would that timeline look like? I mean, what could we do if we wanted to? Just to make sure that I'm clear on...
Sure. If the council wants to move forward...
What would have to happen?
Well, I think what we're asking tonight is, if you think that this partnership is worth pursuing on this particular lot, we're gonna get to work on it right away, so that they can enter the design process and meet those objectives. If you wanna have neighborhood meetings up front now, then we can do that, and that'll, I guess that'll inform the RFP process that we put out, and the RFP will, you know, we could probably turn around and get that out in, I don't know, 60, 60 days, 90 days, if we wanna have neighborhood meetings first. I think there's opportunity for neighborhood input. I mean, we're not, we're asking for consensus around a partnership. We're not necessarily saying, you know, give us this consensus now, and there'll be no engagement. We know there's gonna be a minimum level of engagement, which is with the Historic Preservation Commission, but we can work with the partners to provide other engagement opportunities. I don't know what that looks like right now, but I don't want you to think like, this is the one window we have for neighborhood engagement, and, and if we don't hit it, we can't proceed. In my view, we can, we can figure that out. I'm not sure we'll meet all expectations, but...
At least for me, I think neighborhood, or just the public involvement informs my decision. And so certainly, if we can have some neighborhood and, you know, good neighbor meetings of some type here from the HPC, then I would be better informed to make a decision as to what direction to give staff personally.
I agree, Mayor. I, I was pleased, really pleased to see this project, because I think myself and many others in the community have been trying to talk the school district into revitalizing that home builders program. My nephew in Des Moines, over 20 years ago, was part of a program in the Des Moines School District, and still 20 years later, driving by that house, he's so proud, you know, that I helped build that house. It's a really good program, and I, I was most pleased with that process, but having the Housing Fellowship also involved in it was really important. But I do think an important piece of the process is the Historic Preservation part of it, and in light of the letter from Kevin Boyd, I do think that we should maybe pause a bit on a decision until after their meeting, which is Thursday, but I don't know if that's gonna just screw up our timeline then, but I, I think out of respect to them, we should do that, but...
If I may, and this is with respect, I honestly, I did hear from a number of people, and I was like, yeah, the process part really bears some questioning. But I will also say that it seems very clear to me that this was an incredibly rare opportunity that literally sort of fell from the sky in very quick time. And so this is sort of, it's, it's going in reverse of usual process that hasn't had to occur, but is normally done on good faith, and, and I think that, I'm mindful of some conversations that we've had recently about wanting to be very clear about what our strategic goals are, and this is an opportunity that's gonna help with the future of our economy through kids getting skills, through mentorship, by being able to work through infill, and I realize it is not the exact configuration of the missing middle, however, this is actually giving affordable housing in perpetuity in the core neighborhood. So I feel in many ways, I'm actually inclined to say, yes, I would vote for this to go forward, because I think this is an opportunity that, well, y'all know me, I'll be blunt. I think we would be foolish to pass this up. I really do. And I, and this is also me saying, and we need public input, but there will be time for it, and I think that it behooves the council to put that, to make sure that that happens, right? Staff needs direction, wants direction. For us to say, let's make sure that there's plenty of opportunity, once this land has been purchased and plans are put in place, for public input, and for the core neighborhood, and for the Historic Preservation Commission, to be able to say, what does this need to look like to fit this area? I just, I, I do respect everyone on this, and I respect the need for input. I just think this is an opportunity that would be incredibly short-sighted of us to, we're looking for purity. We're not gonna be able to check everything. And this is, there's so much good that could come from this, and there will be public input. It's not like all of a sudden someone just like, go to it, let's build something. So I just, I'm sorry, I felt very strongly there for a moment. I was like, I just, I can't disagree more.
I can tell you, as the parent of someone who participated in the first student-build project done in Iowa City in years, several years ago through Kirkwood Community College, that it is an amazing opportunity, that they produced, the one that Leah worked with was with Reach Free Your Potential. They produced a house over the course of the summer in which five persons with disabilities now live. It's a beautiful house. It fits with the neighborhood where it was built. These, the young people are under the instruction of construction, of construction and house and professionals. They are only there during certain hours of the day. It's not, you know, this is, it's, if we, if we want to support young people staying in this community, young people learning the trades, and young people then being invested in this community, as well as people in the neighborhood seeing that they are investing in their young people to be part of this community, with a process that will, that will require absolutely that Historic Preservation approve the design, or have a say in the design to make sure that it fits into the neighborhood. I, it's really hard, yes, I understand the process is a little bit backwards, and we can make sure that everybody has their say in the design to make sure that they are, they are okay with it. It's, to me, it's having seen it in person, and having seen, like, my daughter's now a, an apprentice with the Carpenters Union here, in part, in large part, because of that program. This is a great opportunity, and I wanna make sure that, yes, there's, there's also room for, for the input that needs to happen.
Once we sell this property, can we have a design concept or a...
Yeah, like I said, we'll enter agreement, we'll have a deed restriction. We can't have a good neighbor policy regarding the design. It's gonna be, the way it's owned now, it's gonna be a single-family home.
Yes.
We might be able to do two. We can't just rezone just one lot. So we could do a form-based code, but that, that could, that'd be for an area, it wouldn't just be for one lot. So if you wanna wait to get that missing middle and rezone like a whole neighborhood, that, that's gonna take some time. We'd miss this opportunity.
Right.
So the question is of the design of the home, because it's gonna be a single-family home, possibly two single-family homes. So what does that design look like? We can have a good neighbor meeting, we can get that input, we can have the, I'm pretty sure the Housing Fellowship and GT and the home builders would welcome that design comment. Then that design would go to the Historic Preservation Commission to ultimately approve or comment, to get approval. So a good neighbor meeting is not, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
I'll just mention that, you know, missing middle has been a concept that's been, you know, applied in many, many communities across the United States. And this issue of how well will it work in a single-family zone has been addressed with the concept of applying a pilot program. You know, rather than just saying, we're gonna allow a zoning, you know, change to our zoning code, which will be applied to a large area, you identify a site which provides an opportunity to pilot the concept through a community planning process, so that it's allowed to be studied on that site. And so that was one concept that I had in mind. I mean, we, we, you know, Optico's was involved in this effort five, six years ago, whenever, you know, it's quite some time ago. You know, they designed missing middle prototypes for that site. You know, unfortunately, we haven't moved forward. You know, unfortunately, we haven't moved forward on the concept of the form-based code over this period. But it, I have seen that other cities have applied the concept of a pilot program as a way of testing an idea without committing to it on a broad scale so that you have an opportunity to work through whatever issues may come up before opening it up.
We'd have to work with legal to see if we could do that.
Yeah, I know, I understand that.
Go ahead, Lauren.
I just think it's really important that we understand the strategic priorities that this partnership and this opportunity would support. And for myself, who literally campaigned on process, right? I'm like, process is so important. I'm going to get in and make sure that we have processes that are reliable and effective and people know what to expect. I completely support this partnership. I think it's very important that we not lose this opportunity. And I agree with what my colleagues, Janice and Megan, were saying about there will be the opportunity for public input. And I don't want us to micromanage that at the front end and lose this chance when we know that those who are really invested in the core neighborhoods and at the Historic Preservation Commission are going to have those chances. They're the ones who should be receiving that input directly anyway, not us at this stage. And so if we delay and lose this opportunity, we would be foregoing permanent affordable housing on an infill site in the core neighborhoods, which is like a unicorn. I really don't want to miss that opportunity. The partnerships that we would have with, through the Home Builders Association with the school district, with the Housing Fellowship, as I think Jeff said, I think we have really good assurances that that would be successful based on our prior relationships, based on projects and work that we've seen, based on the people who are involved. We can be confident in that legally. We can restrict what has to happen there. We can say, if we're selling this lot, it's going to be for this kind of, you know, this program. And here are the parameters that it has to fit within. So we will know what will happen and that it won't become something different in the future. And the net zero, I just think this checks so many boxes. It would be silly for the idea of, you know, a perfect project, which I understand, John, that desire to have more front-end input. But I think the idea of maybe missing this opportunity for that would be, just, really would be a shame. I also feel very strongly about it. Thank you.
Hey, I was just going to say, I would agree with the last three statements. I do say this is a great opportunity, the educational. Again, agreeing with, there are concerns about process. And had this come to us, if it had existed four months ago, I'd be all down for like the RFP if we had time to do that. I honestly can't imagine an RFP that would excite me as much as everything this comes, that comes with this. Especially partnering with, you know, the school district, the educational opportunities. One other box I'm just going to throw out there that could be easy to check and maybe you already do this, but would be to partner with some of our local trade unions, our carpenters and so on, to have some sort of, I think there's some real opportunities there, just to toss that out there. You know, if you're looking for extra boxes to check, I think that would be a great one. But yeah, so I would definitely agree with thinking this would be a partnership that is good enough that it sort of overcomes some of the shortcomings that normally would be more of a stumbling block, so.
I'm convinced. The reason I'm convinced is that I think the design process is more of the concern that I had for the delay. But I would agree that this opportunity is great. I would agree that the partnerships would be great. We're not talking about partners that we're going to second-guess what their real motives are. You know, should they get this, should they get this property? We don't know what the value of this property is, what we're selling it for. But that'll come, I'm assuming, once we figure out, you know, what is the land worth? So I guess for me, the majority of what I'm hearing is support for moving forward. And I can support that as well.
We just have to make sure, I think, in good faith, that we do the outreach to make sure that we get the feedback at the moments when we, you know, well in advance. And as part of the process, it's just, we're doing it a little bit in reverse because it fell from the sky or flew in. I don't know.
Whatever unicorns do.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're talking about houses, so they do tend to drop once in a while, right?
So for a good neighbor meeting, it's the North Side Neighbor Association. Is there any other, I mean, usually we invite neighbors within so many feet of the home. Is there anyone else you want us to include for a good neighbor meeting?
No one else that I can think of unless.
This might be something that the HPC might have some thoughts on too.
Oh, sure. Okay.
And they're meeting, what, in two days?
In two days.
We can communicate that to staff.
It is of general interest, as I was saying. So, yeah, we need to think about what the engagement consists of.
We can brief staff for the HPC meeting. Jessica can talk about, with the commission at that Thursday meeting.
Yeah, oh, great. Thank you.
So the next step will be for us to return with an agreement to sell the property to the Housing Fellowship. And we'll, your conversation's very helpful. We'll be able to anticipate more of the conversation that'll come at that moment, at that time, and be able to speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Awesome, thanks. We are, any more items from information packets? USG already gave their report. Any council updates? Last call. Hearing none, we're adjourned. Enjoy your night.